I'm going to call to order this regular meeting of the Richmond Board of Education on May 13, 2019 at 7:00. Tonight to say the pledge, we have the high school advanced placement literature class and their teacher, Mrs. Yake. If you guys could please come up and lead us in the pledge. You guys want to stand here and look out? I'm going to say your name. Just give the audience a little wave, okay? Alright, tonight we have Shannon Gaffney, Ashley Talto, Cody Tomlinson, Izzy Ferranti, Emily Gore, Maddie Rigoli. Did Emma Minkett?
Yeah.
Any ready? We get a couple of guests to the dash, Jessie Milton. And Ashley Priswell. So they're going to help us. Okay, and then we have Mrs. Yake, who is the teacher. So if you guys want to turn around and face the play, and we'll start when you guys are ready.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, next up, we have our mission statement Angela.
At Richmond Community Schools, we provide quality education that empowers students to be successful in the global community.
We'll call Angela.
Kristy? Here. Jessica is absent with notice. Sheri?
Here.
Sarah?
Here.
Kyle?
Here.
Margaret?
Here.
And I am here, you have a floor.
Thank you. Thanks to the people of the consent agenda. Oh, the agenda. Sorry. I have one amendment to make. We have added number 14 to add a closed session. So number 14 will become 15. So I'll be looking for a motion to approve the amended agenda.
It's a closed session for Barbie.
I moved motion the agenda as presented, or as...
Amended.
Amended, I'm so sorry.
Support.
Moved and supported, any discussion? Hey, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, now the consent agenda. Looking for motion?
I motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent to approve the consent agenda as presented in the attached documentation.
Support.
Moved and supported, is there any discussion?
I just had one. I had no questions regarding the claims and accounts. On one of the minutes for these student discipline hearings for April 22nd, we corrected the very bottom of the second one on the April 22nd. We made an incorrect date, we corrected that date. So that will be reflected in the official minutes that Jamie has brought up to the board, publishing that.
And I would just like to add, I was in Acolax meetings, but I did watch it, the video, so I will... Okay, so it's moved and supported, no discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Motion passed. Right.
Can I interrupt, because this is new, and I, we don't usually do this. In the consent agenda, you see what you approved was a resolution supporting the adequate and equitable public school funding. If I could have like 30 seconds just to tell... Richmond Community Schools is one of 21 school districts that belongs to the Macomb County School Board Association. And a couple of weeks ago, I believe Angela, you went to a, one of our meetings that they had asked local school boards to promote the governor's budget in terms of funding public schools. And so the resolution that you're supporting, as well as almost every other district in Macomb County, as their school boards are also supporting, basically endorses the governor's budget that finally makes education a priority in this state. We will let the legislators deal with how they're going to fund it. But the underfunding of education is, this is a huge step in bringing up the funding for public schools and what it should be. For the last several years that we have been in a decline or very rare, very little increase to meet our expenses. So that's the resolution that you supported, just for the listening audience.
Thanks, Brian. Okay, next is our trucey moment. This is the portion of our agenda where we can recognize some of the great things happening at Richmond Community Schools. And first up, we have Mr. Wonsley with the recognition of the last driver.
That's us. I'm going to introduce Danny Kennedy, Danielle Kennedy, but everybody knows her as Miss Danny. And after I'm done, I'm going to ask the board if you would come up here and shake your hand. This is truly one of the extraordinary individuals in our organization. On Monday, April 22nd, prior to our last board meeting, I got the dreaded call that every superintendent ever, nobody ever wants to get, that one of our school buses was in an accident. And the first thing that we're asking is, is everybody okay? And when you, when I got out to the site, it was amazing, everybody was okay. The bus was heading eastbound, and a car coming westbound was really just driving in her lane. And Jeff White, who's the Richmond Lenox EMS, as well as some of the police officers on the scene, said, "If it wasn't for her quick thinking and the way she responded with that bus, there would have been fatalities." And in your backup, and I know it's been in the newspaper, the picture of the bus, it's amazing that anybody walked out of there without an injury. What I find most impressive about this driver, and I think it speaks volumes to all of our drivers, her first priority when I got there to talk is making sure the kids were okay. That they were safe, that they were, regardless of what she was going through. And it was traumatic, I mean, it was unbelievable. Danny does his job with a smile every day. She, you may have seen her when we walked in the good old days, Braid, she's driven the bus there. The kids all love her on that bus. And I just wanted to thank her and ask the board to join me, and thank her for her quick action and making sure our students were safe on that bus. Because if it wasn't for her, we couldn't be here and having a different story that we're telling. So I want to thank you.
And Ms. Kennedy, on behalf of the Board of Education, we need to thank you for your quick thinking and your ability to stay calm. It seems like it made a huge difference more than you might ever know what Tali's parents have wanted. Pretty remarkable. So we thank you very much for everything that you do every day, looking out for the kids, putting them first. Thank you. Okay, next we have another trucey moment. It's the Class of 2019 Top 10 Students, Mr. Castle.
One second, getting things set up here. So this evening is my pleasure to introduce the 2019 Top 10. These students have dedicated themselves to academic excellence, making sacrifices that have resulted in truly, truly outstanding grades and test scores. Without question, their persistence and work ethic have resulted in an impressive high school career. If I could have Board of Education come up and join me, please? And then, parents, as your students are called and reviewed, I'd like you to come up and present them with their top 10 medal. First, we have Mr. Cody Tomlinson. Parents Stacy and Jane Tomlinson. Cody has a 3.94 GPA and had decided to attend the University of Michigan next year, where he plans on studying biomolecular science and pre-med. Next, we have Ms. Ashley Priswell. Ashley's parents are Marie and Andy. Ashley has a 3.969 GPA. Plans to attend Michigan State University, where she wants to study nursing and possibly be a physician's assistant. Next, we have Ms. Kiara Burnill. Her parents, Katie and Scott Burnill. Kiara has a 4.001. Plans on attending St. Clair Community College, where she has not figured out what she wants to study yet, but she will definitely be successful in whatever she does in the future. Next, we have Ms. Shannon Gaffney. Her parents Barbara and David Gaffney. Shannon has a 4.02 GPA. As you can see here, we're splitting hairs off. Some of these students are extremely, extremely close. Shannon plans on attending Oakland University, where she wants to study political science. And she was a BWAC scholar athlete this year, and I can attest to her political study skills as she just got me off of a hypothetical murder several days ago. So congratulations, Shannon. I'm sorry, I think I forgot to introduce her parents, Barbara and David Gaffney. Next, we have Mr. Steven Van Gogh. With parents Nancy and Mark Van Gogh. Steven has a 4.043. Is planning on attending Michigan State in the fall, and he will study human biology and business. Next, Ms. Madeline Rigoli. Madeline's parents are Catherine and Matthew Rigoli. Madeline has a 4.072 GPA. Plans on attending St. Clair Community College, where she will study criminal justice. And she was also a member of the BWAC All Academic Team. Next, we have Ms. Jessie Milton. Parents Jennifer and Robert Dixon. Jessie has a GPA of 4.095. Is attending Central Michigan University in the fall, where she is going to study biochemistry with a focus in pre-dentistry. And she was also a member of the BWAC All Academic Team. Next, Ms. Isabella Ferranti. Parents Joanne and James Ferranti. Isabella, or Izzy, has a 4.11 GPA. Is going to attend University of Michigan in the fall, where she is going to study chemical engineering. She is a member of both the BWAC All Academic Team this year, as well as the Macomb County All Academic Team. Next, we have Ms. Ashley Talto. Her parents Teresa and Bernard Talto. Ashley has a 4.16 GPA. Is wisely made the choice to go to Grand Valley State University next year to follow the steps of her principal, where she's going to be in the field of study of environmental engineering. She was a BWAC All Academic Team member this year. And finally, Ms. Emily Gore. Her parents Donna and Larry Gore. Emily had a 4.17 GPA. Is planning on going to Michigan State in the fall, where she is going to study biosystem engineering. She was also a member of the BWAC All Academic Team, as well as the Macomb County All Academic Team. That is the Richmond High School 2019 Top 10.
Congratulations to the top 10. The hard work and dedication you guys have put in has really paid off. And we have an amazing support system here tonight. I can tell, parents, you guys have done a great job, it seems, putting in just as much time and effort maybe to help them get where they are. You guys should be just as proud, but good job, Class of 2019 Top 10. Next, we have another trucey moment. The 2018-19 Outstanding Teacher of the Year, Ms. Ferranti.
I have the distinct pleasure of introducing our 2018-19 Outstanding Teacher of the Year along with our building principals. You may have heard this story before, but there's one book in particular that I think speaks to volumes of what teachers do on a day-in, day-out basis. And it really speaks to the volume that all teachers in Richmond do for our students. But in particularly, our three Outstanding Teacher of the Years who went on to compete at the county level. Having a personal experience with each one of them in some fashion, whether it's just being able to witness them in the classroom, or my own child having them, and what kids speak about them speaks volumes to them. There's a book called Thank You, Mr. Faulkner, and it's about a young girl, Trisha, and her experiences in class, and she can't read. Thank You, Mr. Faulkner conveys the difficulties and frustrations felt by this young girl as she struggles in school. Mr. Faulkner, Faulkner, excuse me, notices her problem. He spends time helping her to make sense of the letters and word. The surprise in the book is that Trisha is really Patricia Clacco, the author of the book. The story is about a dyslexic child struggling and not being able to read, and one who, to one who grows up to be an award-winning, famous children's author. Mr. Faulkner is a story that is sure to touch the hearts of many individuals, and it speaks to what our teachers do on a day-in, day-out basis as they work with each child that they receive in their classroom. Richmond has many teachers that we're very proud of, but tonight we need to celebrate three of them, this year's 2018-19 Outstanding Teacher of the Year recipient. To begin, I'll ask Mr. Koshin to come up and speak a little bit about the Elementary Teacher of the Year, Laura Anbacher. If the board would like to come, Mr. Koshin is ready, and you can also congratulate him.
I don't want to stand here by myself, Mrs. Anbacher. It's very hard to put in words what Mrs. Anbacher does with four-year-old preschool students. I've learned so much from just observing and working with her. Her patience is outstanding with the students. The kids are great, but you know, sometimes four-year-olds, they need a little extra attention. They need to know, work on some of their social skills. Also academically, Mrs. Anbacher really pushes the students, even though they're four years old, they'll get them ready for kindergarten. That's a great foundation, a base for the academics. I try to support Mrs. Anbacher as much as I can, and I think almost every day I say, "If you need someone to come in during naptime and show the students the perfect way to take a nap, just let me know." I'm always willing to do that, but for some reason, she doesn't come ask me about that. But once again, it's great working with Mrs. Anbacher. There's not much I can put in words more what she shows, but I do have what I thought you would be very interested, how the four-year-olds kind of describe how she is such a great teacher. I'll preface this with thanking Mrs. Shinnouski, the Associate Teacher, with some translation. So this is from a second grade student, a former preschool student, Mrs. Anbacher, just stating how she's her favorite teacher, really likes when she reads books. And now for the fun part, four-year-olds. And see if I can just get it to do one. Am I rotating? There we go, yes, thank you. So I'll just fast scroll down, so... Yeah, so this picture means that this student loves Mrs. Anbacher because she rubs my back in rest time. This translation is, "I love Mrs. Anbacher because she's a great teacher." So this is what the students demonstrated by drawing, and then were able to verbalize to Mrs. Shinnouski. "I love Mrs. Anbacher because she plays with me." She's really nice, as you can tell by that picture, very big smile face. Loves that she gives me dojo points. So dojo points for positive, reinforcing the positive behaviors and expectations. Another one loves Mrs. Anbacher because she plays with me. Or to be a preschool teacher. I get to visit when everybody's happy and I can play with them, but once anybody starts getting a little far mood, it's when I have to, I get called back to the office. Yes. Once again, "Love Mrs. Anbacher because she plays with me, because she lets me play," excuse me. She is kind. And then she cleans up our toys. Learning so much skills having someone else plant the toys for you. Once again, it's on a daily basis, it's an honor and a privilege to work with Mrs. Anbacher, and she's very well-deserving of this award.
Next, Mr. Bartel to introduce our Middle School Teacher of the Year, Erin Gillespie.
Okay. This was a great pledger that I'm talking about, Mrs. Gillespie, this evening. RMS is very lucky to have her as a teacher. When you see Mrs. Gillespie in the morning, you will see a teacher who is extremely positive with her students, always has a smile on her face. And she makes it a point to greet each and every student each morning. In the classroom, Mrs. Gillespie strives for effort and respect, and has extremely high expectations. Her classroom is typically set up in small groups, which allows students to engage in constructive conversations with each other, along with Mrs. Gillespie herself. Each and every lesson, as a principal, I love this, each and every lesson, she asks herself these four questions. "What do I want my students to know?" "So what standards am I going to teach?" "How do I know that they learn those standards?" Through her assessments and tests. "What do I do if they haven't learned the material?" So she's already thinking of how she's going to reteach and reassess. "And what do I do if they already know the material?" "How do I challenge them, and how do I extend their knowledge?" In the classroom, Mrs. Gillespie reaches out and attempts to form a positive relationship with each and every student each and every day. She attempts to instill in each student a feeling of value and a belief in themselves. As a teacher, she believes that you get what you give, and that students will not mince words or attitudes. They will reflect on what you, their teacher, puts into teaching. She believes that it's the atmosphere in the room, it's the teacher's energy, their happiness, their positive attitude, their can-do attitude, as well as grit, a teacher does each day. Students will do and follow. She leads by example. She is an extremely loyal team player. She constantly collaborates with colleagues. And she is a strong advocate in helping us to continue an inclusive culture where diverse perspectives are welcomed. One where we can all share, learn, and grow in our practice together. With that being said, she has been an extremely active leader with our standard-based grading. And she's a valuable school improvement team member. She has spent hours with myself, as well as hours by herself preparing for staff meetings, professional development, and was critical with the rollout of our standard-based grading. Mrs. Gillespie is a true champion for RMS. And finally, Mr. Castle to introduce or talk about our High School Teacher of the Year,
This evening is my pleasure to introduce Mr. Delore as the High School Teacher of the Year. Mr. Delore has been at Richmond High School for 25 years and made positive changes to thousands and thousands of students. He has served as an advisor for all four classes, taught 10 different subjects, coached three different sports. There's pretty much nothing that Mr. Delore hasn't done. On a daily basis, he provides a high-quality differentiated instruction to the students. Takes time to get to know what makes, what each individual student takes. He finds and creates that hook that gets the students interested and motivated to learn. And always goes out of his way to help other staff members. Mr. Delore can often be seen in the hallways between classes, gaining the know, not only his students, but every student in the school building. Many of them, which he's had a positive effect on are here tonight. He's a wonderful educator and someone that I am proud to have as a member of Richmond High School. Congratulations.
employees and lunch ladies, and we've got Mr. Wobbs for that.
Between preparing healthy meals for American students, adhering to nutrition guidelines, navigating student allergies, and offering service with a smile, all while monitoring and supervising students, school nutrition professionals are true heroes. On Friday, May 3rd, we celebrated the 7th Annual School Lunch Hero Day. School Lunch Hero is a chance for us to showcase the different school nutrition professionals, which includes not only food service employees, but also lunchroom supervisors, that they make every child who comes through their line feel special. The School Nutrition Association has partnered with an author, Jared Croziet, and I'll say the last name wrong, and there's a series of books called The Lunch Lady books, to remind everybody, directors, managers, parents, students, and staff, that school nutrition employees are super heroes that deserve recognition. It is a great pleasure that we get to recognize our food nutritious service employees, as well as our lunch supervisors, for their dedication and service to Richmond Community Schools. Not everybody was able to attend tonight, but we do have a series, a core group, that will be here. So when I introduce your names, do you please come forward? And I'm going to introduce the ones that are here now. She's over at the Elementary School at lunchtime, these two ladies always have a smile, I think they have a lot of fun. Wash the cavity. Wash the cavity, that's right. She told me that when the day she hired, I think.
Now if you throw a crossing guard, I get four of them.
Christine Hibbert.
Angie Fink is here.
Jerry Murphy, did not see, Dan Tom. Dawn Shear, she wasn't going to be able to. And Barb, and Jim, Jim?
Angie Fink.
Angie Fink?
Angie's here.
You want something, Angie, I don't have it, come on up. I will admit your certificate, I'll hand deliver it tomorrow morning, I apologize. These are lunch ladies, we couldn't do what we do to run this district without them, they provide a lot of service with a smile and the kids love them. So what we've done is, there is a series of the Lunch Lady books that I gave a set to Mr. Bartels and a set to Mr. Koshin, that we're going to catalog and put in the library so our students can read about the adventures of the Lunch Ladies. They are pretty cool.
All right, next up, another presentation by Mr. Womsey, National Teacher Day.
Last week was National Teacher Day on Tuesday, May 7th, and it's a celebration, it's part of the National Teacher Appreciation Week, with the special events of honoring educators throughout every community. And last week, our staff appreciation, each of the buildings had something going on every day to honor not only our teachers, but also our staff. Teachers mold the future citizens through guidance and education. Teachers and college students have a widely different background. Our country's future depends on providing quality education to all students. And I am extremely proud of our teachers because regardless of our students, where their background is, what their economically background is, or whether they're academic, they welcome them where they're at and do what they can do to inspire them to become outstanding students. And tonight, we're here to recognize our teachers who educate our children at Richmond Community Schools. And again, we had some teachers that were able to make it, so I'd like to take time to honor them who are here tonight. And so we will begin with Mrs. Ranger. You know who Mrs. Gillespie left? Mrs. Gillespie, our Teacher of the Year, I know she's got young kids. Mrs. Durst was going to be here, but I know she was sick today and I think she was going to fight me, but I don't see her there.
I have both of them.
Megan Yeats. And Karen Van Ham. So these three who were able to make it represent our teachers, and I know a lot of them, some of them are coaching, and a lot of them are participating in after-school activities, so I thank you every day for what you do. It's not an easy job, and convincing people to go into education becomes more and more challenging with what the legislation has done, but you do it with a smile and you do it with pride, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Moving on, we have Facilities Assessment and the Bond Sicking Fund Options, Mr. Womsey.
All right, we have, a couple months ago, it's probably been two months now, I presented the board a concept about Sicking Fund. And one of the questions that came from the board table was, well, what is the district's true needs as we start evaluating the district? We knew in the last fund that only partial, some of our roofs got replaced, we knew at that time, certain parking lots didn't need to be replaced, but will be needing to be replaced. So we put together a team, and here tonight with us is, I'm going to introduce Dale Jerome from French Associates, he's worked with the district for many years as the architect firm, Jim Machundo from AUC, as well as James Schenken, and give me a second here, I forgot the name, Jerry McCullough, there you go, from Ausle with AUC, who are going to talk about some of the needs and what we've identified looking at the assessment of the building. We have Robert Non, RJ, he's from PFM, he does our financial planning, we work a lot with him in all of our financial planning documents, especially as we're looking at when our bonds are, the millages are dropping off for the leveller. And then we've got Matt Peiser, who is Bond Counsel from Trune, so he's going to talk to you a little bit about your options. So tonight, we have, we did an assessment. We walked every building, we looked at conditions of roofs, conditions of parking lots, we looked at boilers, we looked at roofs, lighting, carpet, tile, and we did everything. Later on in the presentation, you'll see enrollment projection. We have been working with Stanford, which does enrollment projections, so if the board is going to go out for a bond, that's one of the criteria to go up and bring treasury, that enrollment projection, and what does that show? And I'll be talking a little bit later about that one. So to begin, you going to start, Jim, or Dale, who's going to start the PowerPoint? And then I'm going to kind of chime in as you're going, because I've got, you have in your packet, not only this PowerPoint, but you also have the Needs Assessment by Building, what we call the Bond Planning Assessment. And we looked at this in a couple venues, and so I will, we looked at it in terms of what's our total need in the district. I approached the board, I talked to you guys previously about, we have an opportunity to go to the voters, and I may not use the exact language that the attorney wants us to use, but basically no increase over what you're currently paying, or something along that line. We have an option to go that route, which would generate a certain dollar figure, or if we wanted to look at doing the complete Needs Assessment, what it would look like if you wanted to go to the voters for additional bond, or millage, excuse me. So I will turn it over to you.
Okay, so the, when we were looking at the possibility of spending about $15 million, those items became, yeah, the A items, and then the balance of items in item B. So on the site, it's stopped within the campus, we recognized the need for the asphalt replacement, and with asphalt, you have standard-duty asphalt for parking lots where you have cars, and then you have a heavy-duty asphalt for roadways where you tend to see more traffic and heavier trucks and so on. So what this shows, as far as the needs for A items, the paint items are heavy-duty pavement replacement on the campus. The light green areas are light-duty asphalt replacement in parking lots, with the exception of where you're up at the high school, just south of the auditorium, you see the existing lot, which gets replaced, but then gets expanded to become a bigger parking lot. That entire green bar represents replacement, as well as expansion of the auditorium lot. And down at the middle school, that blue shaded area is an extension of the existing lot at the middle school.
So when you look at this, as we started looking at some of the needs in the district, the parking lot behind the auditorium is crumbling. And looking at how our facilities are used with various groups and organizations, whether it's theater, our own performances in the odd, or whether it's potentially tap hall, or whether it's the enrollment increase at the middle school, or whether it's over at the elementary school, parking is always a premium. So that's the potential of looking, adding on to those parking lots to address some of those needs that we've got.
So again, we've got expanded parking at the middle school and the high school, some parking lot replacement, and some heavy-duty replacement in the access roads. Also, there's a little bit of sidewalk replacement, sort of that orange color, it's up at the main entrance there of the high school, along the main drive there at the front entrance, as well as along the bus drop-off loop at the elementary school. So those items were priced in column A, then everything else that's gray, which is the balance of the campus, everything that's gray would be all asphalt replacement, heavy-duty and standard-duty pavement for the balance of the site.
So I go back to when we originally talked about this, we talked about going to the voters and asking, no increase over what you're paying, what would that generate? And if we went to the voters and asked, it would generate about $15 million. So that's what that part A is. And then I believe there was a question, it was either Kyle or Angela, I can't remember when we were sitting up there, someone asked, what's the total cost as we look at the needs? Do we wait and go several years and go for another bond, or do you just ask the voters? That's the column B, or the section B, I mean, on the diagrams that you're seeing, as well as on the building assessment, you'll see an A and a B column. If you wanted to go for the whole bond, it would be the total of those two columns.
So I guess we can edit our questions regarding the site, can address those now? If not, Dale from French would step up to talk about building improvements.
Did you say there was, I'm sorry, did you say there were additions to the middle school parking?
In front.
Did you say in middle?
In front.
Is that that blue? Okay.
That's the expanded lot at middle school.
So that's the front lot, just making it go more towards the road?
Correct.
That swings around, okay.
And the green at the elementary, is that an addition as well?
The green is the existing lot.
Yeah, that's just a repair.
So the gray is an addition, but it's B, it's a B, okay.
If you wanted to just do, when the option is just the 15, that would be down the road that we either have to back to the boundaries or do it somehow anyhow. If you wanted to do the whole thing, we could look at expanding. On that parking lot, though, we would have to relocate the soccer fields that are currently there. But it would provide parking for the baseball fields that are...
So people are parking on our grass all over the place.
Dale, hope you don't mind if I jump into...
Oh yes, please do. Hello, everyone, I see familiar faces, good to be back. And yes, I've been here a while, Brian, so, I think since '93. So, but it's good to still be here and your buildings haven't gotten any younger, that's the awareness that you already have, but just taking a look at the elementary school first, again, this is kind of broken down by the A and E categories that you see in the summaries that AUC have provided. As I'm sure you're aware of, the big issue at Lee Elementary is space crunch. We've run out of space, house the fourth graders, you're making that shift. So the idea here is how do we free up space in both A and/or add space in A and B to regain the ability to house additional classrooms at Lee Elementary. So in the A, the lower right-hand corner of the slide there shows the light blue area where you would essentially create a preschool wing on the end of the building, create its own secure entry, and provide space for that, to free up space in the building. And then it's shown on the A slide here, but... And then, it's shown on the A slide here, but in gray, I'll mention, is part of the B, so that's where you add the six classrooms, four at the southwest corner, or southwest wing of the building, and two in the upper right or northeast corner of the building. The work lists detail the specific line items of each category, but in general, the paving that was already mentioned on the site plan is obviously part of the project. Then you see roofing in both the A and B columns. Minor renovations, which bullet here is primarily, for most part, ceilings and flooring, that's the two main categories that you see in there at Lee Elementary. And then we do have a fair amount of HVAC work, heating and cooling in both. A lot of rooftops that have basically come to the end of their life cycle, and they won't continue to get better, they'll just continue to get worse. And so, there's a lot of replacement of specific rooftop units across all of the buildings. And then the remaining items in the electrical category are primarily lighting, transitioning inside of the building, in two groupings of hallways, of corridors, and what I would call the first wave, and then the second wave of more in the classroom areas, but basically, switching over to LED lighting, which really should result in a fairly quick operational savings. We're seeing as quick as like three-year payback on LED lights in a lot of buildings. So, and then this ends up being, helping the general fund, so. And then, there are some remaining items under the electrical category for clock, fire alarm, PA systems. Again, really, the buildings are just old, that's, and like a lot of school buildings, these systems get to a point where you can't find parts for them anymore, you just, you just simply can't maintain them. They've been stretched as far as they can be stretched, and it's time to do a whole set change. The other thing that you can pick up when you're in place, things like fire alarm systems, is obviously you get a new level of safety and security for the students.
When you look at this slide, Dale talked about the kind of two-phase. If you look at the bottom right where it talks about the latch key, the thought was this, we'll be extending on to the building, creating a new latch key that allows parent, it forces them into a vestibule, into the latch key. Right now, when they come in, after they are buzzed in, they actually, there's nothing stopping them from walking down the hallway. By doing that, it creates the old latch key room to be a preschool classroom. It also creates, in this concept, a multi-purpose gymnasium, which would then free up the gymnasium at the elementary school, particularly when we're dealing with sports teams and trying to find space for them. That could be utilized for the latch key after hours or before school. With the idea then, on the second phase, or the addition would be at the end of the, we currently have a second grade hallway for another six classrooms that could be added on there.
Dale?
Yes?
When you were talking about minor renovations, the flooring that, throughout the building, or certain areas?
The lighting is pretty comprehensive, and James, you know, you're close, as close or closer to the study than I am at this point, but it touches the majority of the building in terms of lighting and flooring.
Okay.
It's pretty comprehensive, it's not like a patchwork arrangement.
It's on the backup for Lee, and line 22 and 23, so it's all replaced and removed vinyl composition tile, as well as ceiling tiles and corridors, and replaced carpet throughout it. So, basically a ballpark, if there's carpet there, the concept is replace it with carpet. Many of the tiles that were put in in the '96 bond in the gym, you can see we've patchworked it and fixed it, or they're starting to crack, that we've had to replace the tiles, and so that would be a, whether you did the full amount, or whether you just did the column A, which is the, we call it no increase over what you're currently paying, that's $15 million.
So, in the B category at Lee Elementary, you really just are picking up, as I mentioned, the classroom additions, more paving, and then the additional round of renovation, additional ceiling work, and then more of the HVAC and lighting are part of that. There's also some specific additions in the B category. You see there, it's specifically highlighted, emergency generator, things like that are picked up in the B category for, with Lee and the other schools as well.
With some of the power outage we faced, we've lost some of the food that's in our freezers, and it just began to thin out, so I'm that part of looking at backup generators so we can prevent that, what we're trying to do.
So, Brian, if we were to go with the A, we wouldn't get these extra classrooms here? Those are the, so by adding this on, does it, it frees up one classroom, right? Because we don't have to move down this hallway?
Correct. So, the current preschool that's in that 300 hallway would move up to there, it'd free up a classroom there. In this model without the B, the conversation really about moving fourth grade ever back becomes very limited. If you were, if the board ever wanted to have that conversation, you have now a little more room that you could potentially move fourth grade back.
When are we anticipating needing these extra classrooms? I know that was kind of further down the line in the conversation.
When we look at the summary on the, on the projection, you'll see in a couple of years, we'll see it once we move fourth grade, what the current elementary enrollment is projected to be. It's down, down the road yet. So, if you only did the column A, we have some time before we have to, because we really have the hardest conversation, and we are again at capacity.
So, what would we do with these rooms? If we went for B?
If you went with them, well, they'd either sit vacant until the need, or you could relook at relocating. We could expand, and you could move some of the preschools so that they have their own rooms, so the rooms are being utilized. I don't necessarily would recommend that, because then you increase the maintenance costs for cleaning rooms on a daily basis and so forth.
Right. Could you put preschool in those rooms if they don't have bathrooms? Because these ones won't be equipped with all bathrooms, will they?
The design of the rooms, I don't believe, we, we're not that far yet. We're conceptioning the dollars. What we did talk about was, in the second grade wing, which is the second wing currently, they do not have bathrooms. So, I would envision something between the old addition and the new, maybe it's another gang, I should say gang, a community bathroom, I call it gang bathroom, that's where I'm looking for, community bathroom?
I call them gang bathrooms, too.
Okay. Between that, because that wing, between the 300 and the 400, that's a lot of kids that have go into those bathrooms there. The preschool, if you were doing the addition, you know, we could build into those with a bathroom in those five. You technically could build in a bathroom with.
As long as, as long as the plumbing underground is there in proximity to the additions, the square foot costs that AUC has built in here would allow for us to put a bathroom in the classroom, so.
Because there are special, some of our special education classrooms are down there as well, that may?
Currently, the ECSE classroom is down there, and it does not have a bathroom in that classroom.
Now, these ones just, I mean, okay, I know, this is where the third, fourth graders line up right now, right? Is there space to, I mean, there's enough space to put two classes, because doesn't that go right to the road?
It would be number one classroom, yeah, it would be, it would be close, yeah. There would be a lineup out there, you probably have, we have to move the students to lineup somewhere else. The concept on that, that two addition would be, at some point, we're going to start having that five lead section, so.
Right.
Trying to keep them together, that would be the concept.
Yeah. You could fit one classroom, and I've just flipped back to the slide, just to kind of show that, the amount of space you have there. It's, it's tight on both ends of the building, but I think it's realistic to accomplish what we're showing here in concept, so. Any other questions on Lee? If not, I'll jump to the middle school. You can always come back if something else pops into your head as we're going through this. So, at the middle school, again, looking first at the A category, and here, there are no additions, but some specific areas that we're renovating or modifying within the footprint of the building. I think the primary focus as far as safety goes is trying to reconfigure the office area. Basically, anytime from safety and security standpoint, when the office is what I call inboard, not outboard, it makes for a lot of challenges with creating a true secure entry point. So, we would shift the office around to accomplish that in A. We would also move the weight room to the front of the building, convert the existing weight room to classroom space, remodel the art room, and then, within the area on the west side there, the left-hand side of the slide, we see it says create stem room in the, near the media center. Again, roof replacement, paving that we've already talked about. Again, the renovations is primarily ceilings and flooring, and then we've already kind of, you'll see a common theme throughout, these kinds of carry through the classroom, the LED lighting, the clock systems. In this case, we put the generator in A, because that's your primary kitchen, so if the power goes down for any sustained amount of time, you're likely to lose product.
That's the building that we lose power most often. In the office, the concept was in that far right, there's a conference room over there, which is somehow incorporate that conference room within the office, so if you're holding maybe an IP or parent meeting, you're not necessarily having to bring people through the building, they can kind of stay within the confines of the office area. And if you're secure, like the high school and the elementary, we're forced to move to the office.
So, Brian, didn't we talk about creating a separate entrance for the fourth grade set?
I don't show that.
It's not on here, because we have, in the school safety grant that we were awarded, one of, we do have new entrance doors that we were awarded, and that would be at the end of that hallway. What that looks like, we've got to put the RFP out and go through that process.
So, that's already accounted for?
That, that could be, that's already accounted for on the school safety, but in this plan, if we need to look at that being a little different, we could do that. But we already accounted for that.
I'm going to jump actually ahead one slide, because I think it makes more sense since it's in A, just to talk a little more in detail about how we would shift things around. And again, this is just first blush, we haven't, you know, gotten in any detailed conversations with staff and things about this, but in general, the idea you see here with entrance, in my thought process is, if we can essentially kind of shuffle the deck a little bit and shift that locker bay down, it would allow us to push the office area up into that space, create a point where it's directly adjacent to the outside of the building, so they can see who's coming towards the building, and then create that secure vestibule right off the outside of the building, so that we can, you know, get that preferred arrangement for a secure entry point. And then, as I said, by moving the lockers down to the southern portion of that area that's currently offices, it would essentially make, instead of two separate locker bays just right crossing each other, so for supervision standpoint, building supervision, there's actually some advantage to that, I think. Now, again, this is just my first blush pass at this, you know, I think probably done about 170 of these now, so I know that the bottom line goal is to get that office adjacent to the outside of the building, and this concept like this would achieve that. Now, you see the dashed lines there, the one thing, right now, you have kind of a nice flow straight across the front of the office, as far as the main corridor within the school. It would have to be rerouted around the back of that office area to achieve this, but I still think that, other than, you know, familiarity with that traffic flow pattern, once they've adjusted to it, it'll probably become second nature. And I think what you gain by moving the office to this outboarded position offsets any temporary shift in that corridor, and like I said, over time, I think it'll just become second nature, but that's just the way it is now, and, and the traffic flow will adjust within the building, the way they walk through the hallways will adjust to the new pattern pretty quickly. Any questions about this idea? It's, like I said, it's pretty much a standard approach to the way we deal with school entrances now, always making sure that the office is, is essentially the gatekeeper role. So, I'll go back one slide, and in B, at the middle school, again, the paving that we talked about, more of the ceilings. There are, in the renovation category in B, there is things like, you'll see the detail on the sheets that you have, but there's art room cabinets, things like that included in there. Or, excuse me, I jumped ahead, I changed my order and I got ahead of myself. That's, that's at the high school. But at the middle school, again, in the renovation category, you have more roofs, more ceilings and floors, again, picking up additional rooftop units. We just tried to, again, have that A bracket, B, no more than the zero increase millage, and everything else that was in the assessment.
No.
Huh? Without some thought, ended up in the B category.
So, one of the things that we looked at with the middle school, and you're also going to see at the high school, is looking at existing space, not trying to expand the square footage of the building, but looking at the existing space and reconfiguring what's there. So, for instance, in the media center, the, the middle school's a huge media center, so if we were looking at potentially, we need a classroom space, you could, on the phase two, or that second part, we could use half of it to add two more classrooms. Moving the weight room up to the old, what I call home macro, because I don't know if that was officially called in middle school, creates another classroom down next to the area where I'm at. You'll see a small space at the top, currently in the locker rooms, the girls' lockers are the original lockers to the building, the boys will replace at some point, we want to upgrade those lockers, taking the existing shower stalls, maybe, because they're not utilized to that level, maybe you make, shrinking them, because you still want to have the ability to have some type of shower in there, but create some type of storage, or additional storage in that area. There's that little room right at the edge between the board, the band room and choir, potentially making that into a concessions for, with a roll-in wall or some bigger doors that they could serve concessions out of there, and have everything stored there. Currently, they're storing in the office of the girls' locker room, is where they store their, their concessions. So, again, this was first blush, not trying to add on, expand the square footage of the building, but utilize the building and see where we can gain and look at a potential enrollment. Because next year, when, after fourth grade moves, we really only have a handful, a class, less than a handful, left in that middle school, which would be about what we have now at the elementary school, the middle school, the high school, and get back.
And I would say that, you know, utilizing those, that space in the media center to create those classrooms if needed, is a, is a, is a good strategy, I would say, across the board. Most media centers that we're reworking, we're finding that we can fit the media center function within a half or less of their current footprint in most schools. Media centers tend to be one of the most underutilized spaces in schools today. Why? Because most reference materials are all online now, so that part of the collection is pretty much gone, and the remaining collection is also, in many cases, downsized. So, with more and more content available online, the space that you need in a media center to house books is significantly reduced, and so we can find new ways to use that space. And so, I think it's a great opportunity for you to capture a couple of classrooms if they're needed, without having to put on an expensive addition to the building. High school, in A, primarily what you see here is the idea of shifting, and with the newer locker rooms that were created as part of the gym addition some years ago, the older locker rooms are underutilized, and it seemed like a good opportunity to gain some additional space that's needed for the weight room. And again, if we take what's currently being used for robotics, and we shift that up to the front corner of the building, we can free up and recreate up to three classrooms in that part of the building. The rest of the work there, the renovations, are kind of the same. Like I said, there are a few unique things, like art room. Like I said, there are a few unique things like art room casework. And a big thing in the roof renovation category for this building in A is the interior doors and frames on this building, which are all pretty much, I believe, still original.
So one of the things as we looked at each of the buildings to create a certain number of potential classroom spaces so as the enrollment potentially grows as we look at it. Where that parking lot is in the back of the auditorium, if at any point the district ever got to a point where they needed to add on to the high school, you have the ability to go off the existing science wing and not even affect that science classroom. If you were to go off with currently the 100, 300 hallway, which is this hallway back here, now you need to cut into that parking lot and it affects people's access to the auditorium and so forth. So the concept is it still allows you the ability to add on to that area, which is now affect the practice fields behind the high school. But I don't see that when you look at the enrollment projection anywhere in the next 10 years that we'd have to add on. Barring some mass movement that nobody expected to come in this area, the additional classroom would definitely accommodate the potential increase in enrollment.
And then in the B category, it's really just, again, more of the additional paving, more roofs, ceilings, flooring. Additional rooftop units get taken care of and the balance of LED lighting replacement along with adding a generator to the high school. That was a very snapshot version of extremely detailed list. This is just kind of gives you the summary. And I believe you had the lists of each building broken down into A and B categories. But this summary just shows you how those shake out in terms of total and building by building costs.
The one thing I do just want to point out, you also have the transportation, which is shown on the asphalt, which would be where the bus garage is parked in that parking lot. But also, there's a line item in the transportation sheet. It's a line item, I believe it's four. It talks about the asphalt paving for the Roosevelt Civic Auditorium for that parking lot. Depending on what the board wants to do with that building when they lease it up, that parking lot is in desperate need of repair. And that alone is approximately about $125,000, $126,000 just for that parking lot.
The remainder of discussions that, you know, we can sort of help with would be to actually answer any questions about specific items on the list that maybe you saw or wanted more clarity on. So we'd have to try and answer questions about that or anything graphically that you've seen here.
So this would add air conditioning to the high school? Is that what a DX cooling is?
So when we switch to DX cooling, there's an additional electrical capacity. So this just takes care of the areas that are currently air conditioned. It does not add in air conditioning throughout the building.
So for instance, the rooftop units that are on the gym, media center of the high school, in the media center at the elementary school. The, I believe, the band room at the middle school has a rooftop unit. We have the capacity that we could convert the high school units to that back area, the band room, the art room, and the choir room could be air conditioned if we switched out the unit. And I did have a price on that one because the system does have the capacity. But at the elementary school, the gym, rooftop, computer lab, media center, all the uniments that were replaced on the last bond, which were primarily classroom uniments, with the exception of the kindergarten, first grade classroom, those were not replaced. Were not designed to be air conditioned. They were just for heating. So if you wanted those classrooms, I know what the cost would be, but you'd have to do some type of ductwork or individual unit for each classroom. And then you'd have the electrical upgrades for that and so forth. But this, the units that we're talking about, is in every room, there's no classroom. Is where all the rooftop units are. So there would be some areas that would become the potential air condition that currently aren't. Just like the media center at the middle school, the gym band room or the gym choir room at the elementary here at the high school could be air conditioned because we swapped out those units.
I don't know if you'd be able to guess, but what do you think would be to air condition the buildings? I mean, we're talking about.
Any ballpark?
Well, you basically have to, shoot me in the back if I'm wrong, guys. Yeah, you basically have to replace, you'd have to replace the units that are in the classrooms to do it because they're not designed to air condition. They're just not designed to heat and ventilate. So you're basically, I would say.
Wait, wait, architects never give numbers.
I want to see if I'm right. Give me a shot at it. I would say $12,000 to $15,000 per classroom.
And that's the reason why you don't give up numbers.
Twenty. Oh, I'm close.
Because in essence, it's starting completely over. Right? It's taking everything we have out and starting over. Right?
Yeah, that's.
With what we've just redone.
The other thing to keep in mind is that's to install them.
Right.
Now you've got to run them and pay the electrical bill.
Right.
And that would be probably the deciding factor. It is for most school districts. We don't, we don't not put air conditioning in classrooms because we think it's a bad idea.
Right.
We don't air condition the classrooms because most school districts say we can't afford to run the systems.
Correct.
So, and the general rule of thumb is that your electrical bills will triple.
That's why I asked the question. Are there any, with the roofing options and such, would there be any options to do solar or any other alternative energy ideas?
Michigan is still, you know, we haven't seen the payback in schools because right now, you don't run year-round. And the real opportunity for savings is in the summer months. But most filling schools aren't open in the summer. So there's no, there's no chance to reach. So the advantage of having those alternatives doesn't really realize its full potential because you're not operating in the peak demand months. Now, if you went to year-round school, it might change the formula. But in general, you don't typically have a quick enough payback that they make sense.
Except for on the environment, maybe?
Well, sure.
Right, thank you.
All right, so we will go on. Then the next part is RJ is going to talk about, what does this look like for a voter? And RJ, I'm going to run it from this machine.
Okay.
So give me a second to swap it over and look at our different options here. So you just tell me what you want me to move forward here.
Sure. Good evening, my name's RJ Naughton. PFM Financial Advisors. And originally, I started out as Stone Marching Associates working with the district. That firm was acquired by PFM in 2015. And part of our role as financial advisors is to make sure that the district's well-informed of your alternatives for funding capital projects so that you can make those well-informed decisions. Pardon my voice, just getting over it. So I'm getting over sinking funds. Usually just for comparison and dive going to the bond project. So I already mentioned, PFM's a national financial advisory firm. We're based out of Ann Arbor. And the next slide is a sinking fund overview. Now sinking funds could be as many as three mills for as long as 10 years. And the sinking funds voted since 2017 could now be used for security equipment and also security equipment and technology for instructional use. Thank you. Sinking funds could be reduced due to heavy millage if existing property goes out of way faster than inflation. So sometimes, the district's benefited by new property and that could offset any heavy erosion that lowers the millage with sinking fund. But it's possible you might go from three mills on a sinking fund and over a few years, might go down to 2.95 or something just because of that heavy factor. And it's usually interest-free way of funding projects, which means each year you get sinking fund receipts. You can use them that year for payments over the years. And I do have some sinking fund examples. The previous slide there is a comparison of permitted uses for sinking funds and bonds. So that's going to be track to refer to. And here is estimated sinking fund receipts. And this assumes that the first levy for the sinking funds in July of 2020 and that the annual change in taxable value is three and a half percent for 2019, two and a half percent thereafter. And as you can see, sinking funds bring in, based on that taxable value growth, 551,000 per mill. And if it's a five-year, it's just under 2.9 million. Or if it's over 10 years, just under 6.2 million.
So this is, this was the conversation we had a couple of months ago. We were talking about, well, what would a sinking fund generate? And what was the actual need that we have based on?
And by the way, as you will see with your debt millage, it's projected that one mill is going to fall off your debt millage with the 2020 debt levy. And so you, the district could offset the mill dropping off the debt millage with either a mill for a sinking fund or a mill for a bond issue. Or even if the millage for a bond issue is more than a mill, you could say that of which one mill is being replaced. And we'll see an example of that. So this is the millage projection before additional bonding. And on the left, we have projected growth of your tax base. Now, when we're talking about bond issues, we can use maybe more plausible taxing type of projection because you don't have to worry about heavy erosion there. And all these schedules are preliminary because we don't have the 2019 taxable value yet. It's expected very soon, right? Very soon, hopefully within two weeks, we're going to have your 2019 taxable value. And hopefully, we're conservative here with three and a half percent change in taxable value. Maybe a little more percent. So we use this growth projection, three and a half percent for 2019, three percent thereafter. The district could have hold on to the five and a half mill levy for 2019. And then it's projected that the millage for your existing debt would decrease by one mill with the 2020 levy. And that means that if the district were to have a new bond issue, you could use that mill falling off essentially to replace mills for a new bond, as long as that new bond is being levy for in July of 2020. That means that if the district were to have a vote and you want to take advantage of that mill falling off, that you have a few tries at it. Notably, a November of 2019 vote and May of 2020 vote. Because with the May of 2020 vote, we can issue the bonds and still levy for them in July of 2020. And we'll talk a little more about the timing of the election late later. So that's the before millage projection. Here's a summary schedule of bond projections. And there are two projections here. Again, I'll emphasize it's preliminary because the 2019 taxable value does play a key role in this. Another factor is the monthly draws. So we work closely with the architects and construction managers. And during the process, we run various scenarios to find out which results in the lowest millage impact. Or if you're looking at like a no-mill increase, how much more you can get for like a no-mill increase. And we'll look at different bond terms, issuing bond series, whatever it takes to make that happen. Part of it depends on how soon the funds are needed. We look for a monthly draw schedule. And so there are a few factors that play an important role. And we'll gather all that information as we move forward. This first scenario is with a $17.4 million bond issue issued in two series. And the second series is for $3 million. And this is estimated to be used for technology pluses and possibly growths. Your last bond issue was voted in three series. And the subsequent series were used for technology and pluses, right? And so if the district will have to do something like that again, because, you know, some benefit of that is your general fund doesn't have to worry about those items for a longer period of time. Then we could have bonds issued in series. But the renovation type project might be what's being used in the bonds in the early years. It's that 2024 series in this example that is for technology plus possibly growths.
So just to recap, in the series A for the no increase, there is 500,000 budgeted for buses, which is approximately five buses. We had purchased all of our buses with the last bond. So we have nothing budgeted going forward for any new buses. And so typically with our fleet, you should budget approximately one bus replacement a year. That puts roughly every 13 years kind of pushing it with the, some of the roads our buses drive on and the wear and tear that they take. But we need to at least be on that big bus a year.
So as we run these scenarios, we may look at have a subsequent series, be only one and a half million. Or maybe have another series for use down the road after 2024 or another refresh of technology buses. So we'll look at different options. So in this example, 17.4 million, of which 14.4 is like bond for the renovation type project. And then you have the estimated amount for the projects because some of the bond proceeds could be used for capitalized interest. That means that part of the bond proceeds are using, used for an interest being on the bonds to help offset the millage impact along with bond issuance costs. So we have the estimated amount of bond proceeds for the project, 14.2 million in this example on that first series and just under 3 million on the second series. The ballot would reference, and then I don't want to steal from other here about what bond proposals are all about. But the ballot would reference the estimated millage in the first year for the new bonds and the estimated average millage over the bond term. And in this example, it would refer to the estimated millage in the first year for the new bonds of one mill. However, it is a no-mill increase from the 2019 levy. And so in that case, bond council will allow for additional prices that says this is a no-mill increase from the current levy. And that's golden because that increases the chances that the bond issue capacity from 58% to 90%. So you're essentially, in this first example, replacing mills. Then we have the second scenario there. And it's for a larger project, 35 billion overall, of which three millions for that series in 2024. So it's more like 32 million for the renovation type projects. And when districts issue bonds, we invest the bond proceeds during the construction period. And with larger bond issue, that interest earnings on bond proceeds comes closer to offsetting bond issuance costs. So the total amount variable for the project is close to 32 million. And in this example, the first year millage the ballot purposes is 2.4 mills. However, it's 1.4 mill increase from the 2019 levy because essentially, one mill is being replaced. So that's a quick summary of those two scenarios. We can go back to a stacked bar chart referring to the first scenario. An easy way of showing that we're not increasing the millage. We're replacing the bills falling off of the existing debt with the new mills for a new bond issue. So the bond issue is 15. So the bond issue is 15 years in term. However, we're only at the highest millage for about seven years or so. And there's a big dip in mills going out to 2026 or so. And that is another window in time to have maybe another no-mill increase bond issue. So that millage that's falling off actually is in 2028, is 1.63 mills. So if the district were to do like a no-mill increase type scenario, we could structure this bond issue to accommodate maybe another no-mill increase bond issue just eight or nine years from now, to take care of those other needs. The next scenario is for the larger bond issue. And this is, even though it's a 2.4 pipe of that red bar in the first year, it's 1.4 mill increase on the prior year's debt millage. And in this example, the drop in mills in 2028 is one mill. So even with this example, there is another window in time, eight or nine years later, for another no-mill increase bond issue.
And that's strategically, that's what you have to worry, you need to think about when's that next opportunity. Because as you know, when you own a house, there's always an improvement that you're going to have. Our buildings have thousands of kids that come in and out of them every day, doors open, closed, things do not last forever. We're going to have to have that ongoing maintenance, and that provides you that next opportunity.
By the way, one reason why that whole one mill is falling off is because when we structured that last series of technology bonds, we structured the declining principle. And so that was to help plan for this. And whether it was a sinking fund or a bond issue, we just knew there was going to be some funding call to consider at the time we issued that technology bond last year, wasn't it? So we can move on to the next slide. And these are the election statistics. It hasn't been updated for the last week's elections. But overall, we have 16% passage rate with bond proposals, school bond proposals. And of those that were a millage increase from the current levy at the time, 58% passage rate. And of those that were a no-mill increase from the current levy at the time, a 90% passage By the way, getting back to the no-mill increase scenario, I'd like to emphasize that if you were to refer to it as a no-mill increase, to add from the current levy, because from a certain perspective, it could be seen as a one-mill increase from what the levy would otherwise be. So that's important, that as Brian mentioned, that districts plan for the future needs, and when they have an opportunity like this, they have enough lead time to start planning for a bond issue or cover your needs when you have. In the last slide is the election dates. And for November vote, most bonds are state-qualified. That means if there's a preliminary qualification, you need to add Department of Treasury, go through a preliminary qualification application. And that meeting takes place in June or July.
Yeah, as trying to put our ducks in a row and prepare depending where the board want to go, we have set that tentative date up with Treasury. So if the direction of the board is we want to go forward with this, we now begin working with them, put our documents together, and we have the date with Treasury that we could actually put this on the November 5 election. We have, as you've heard, we have two opportunities here. If they are not successful in November 5 election, then we could, and that's to go back and try again in, I think it's May, until we go. But next year, we do have a March election, we got the presidential primary.
And the absolute latest the district could wait to decide on the final scope of the project, the absolute latest, is a week before the preliminary qualification.
So we're talking mid-June, first of June, June 10th is that we would have to have our ducks in a row so that, I think Dale, you put all the packets together for the Treasury.
They've provided that one too.
Yeah.
So any questions then?
I have a question just about, it's not necessarily about the mills. It's about, you know, we said that there was, there could be, what, nine, nine years before we would ask for the second portion if we only did a no-no increase. Now, it would be nine years before there was another no-no vote available. Are our HVAC systems and these other things going to last another nine years?
What I would see in looking at that list, my first answer is going to be no. There are HVACs that we're, they're failing.
Right.
When we started creating that list, one, with the idea that we would want to go to the voters maybe in the future. Part of the challenge, a lot of the stuff that's in that initial A list is stuff that nobody sees, roasts, unitments. So when you go back and you, you know, something that's selling point voters, and I gave you 14 million, what'd you do with it? It's a lot of behind-the-scenes stuff. The flooring and I think the hallway we put in that E-list one, but not the classroom lighting. So we're trying to strategically see, give people stuff that they're going to see that we're going to need to improve on. But there are some HV, like the elementary one right now is down, that I've got, it's about a $5,000 cost to fix it. And I'm trying to figure out just to piecemeal it, at least in the summer, if I can figure out what we're going to do long-term wise with that unit. But there are some of these I would say no. In eight, nine years, when you look at some of the parking lots, and there's some critical ones that were in the A, but there are some that we can patch.
Was that sidewalk over by the bus loop, was that a B or, no, that was an A item?
That was the elementary bus, the sidewalk, yeah. There's a line for sidewalk sidewalks that we could identify certain areas that are in much more of need than others. Maybe there's like a placelot for dollar figures, or some of the cement work that we could.
So I think I asked this last time, I messed it against, I don't remember. What, if we go for the higher two that includes A and B, what does that increase the homeowners' taxes?
It's a 1.4 mill increase for 32 million, which I believe is just under the total that Dale had. So if your home has like a $200,000 market value, that's estimated to have a $100,000 taxable value. So that would be a $140 a year increase.
From what they're paying.
Yeah, if you did the full mod, you took your, basically your value cut in half, that's your taxable, multiplied by 1.4, I think that would be the amount you pay in additional taxes to do the full mod.
Hopefully, these projections will come better once we do the 2019 taxable value.
The last time that we did a millage, how many times do we present that to the community? Do we, I wasn't on the board.
What do you mean by how many times?
Did it fail before it passed?
2013.
At least once, I know there were.
Keith, it was twice, wasn't it? That last, this last one, wasn't it twice?
Yes.
I think, I believe it was twice.
Okay. And how much was that increase?
Roughly the same.
The same.
I would say about the same amount.
It was a 14.3 million dollar bond that we did when I started it, 14. That's what the vote was passed in November, so it was tall.
I just remembered the figure, like $100 a year, that's what I, that's what I remember.
And so Brian, are you recommending the option for A and B then? Is that your recommendation or?
From a needs assessment in the building and not having anything budgeted in the general fund, A and B, the challenge is getting it passed.
Well, but the challenge is that if we're looking to do A and B, we cannot have a vote in November of 19. There's no way. You're not, we won't be able to have a vote in November of 19. This community does not support this kind of stuff normally. I mean, I think we need a longer planning period to get this to pass, in my opinion.
I would recommend what other districts did, such as New Haven, hire a consulting firm that puts all the stuff together for you, tells you what groups, that's what they did in New Haven.
Well, yeah, we've done that before too, Brian, but the reality is, it's the middle of May, and the deadline to go to Treasury, all that kind of stuff, I just, it makes me very nervous to think that if we're talking about doing, $36 million was on Dale's thing for the A and B, to think that we're going to do all that work and we're going to get people convinced, we need to have, there need to be forums, all of that stuff that is involved with a PR group or whatever, I just think it's a stretch.
To get quality information back to the citizens.
Listen, I've lived here forever and I've lived through, and Dale has lived through 13 in a row that didn't pass in the 90s. So I mean, it's not, nothing's really changed that much in Richmond of the mentality of voters.
How much has a community grown in that 19 years? Like, I mean, I don't know the answer to that either.
Well, we haven't grown in 10 years because it.
Right, our schools have lessened and.
No, I'm saying, I don't know, there's a lot of the community that it will take a lot to get people on board to do this. It's an absolute.
I think it does in any community.
Yeah, and it's a $140 increase per year. Many of us donate that, donate that to the school in general, you know.
But we see the result of it, and I think that's back to what Brian was saying, you see the result of it, and that's the hard thing to pass.
But I don't, I often donate and have no idea where it's going to. I'm just putting it out there and taking, you know, the word of a booster or PTO, whereas I feel we have, the voters will actually have an outlined plan with what we want to do with this money.
I think being a parent helps because you're invested in this.
Yes, of course.
There are many people in this community that don't have any attachment to the school, and those are the people we need to capture. I like the idea of community forums and getting everybody on board. My question would be, what is the negative of doing the November? Like, I like the idea of being prepared, but what are the cons of doing it in November and then having the backup of May if it doesn't pass? What are the outs, or what is it, what does it hurt us?
Is there a cost to it, a financial cost?
There's a cost to the election that we pay. Last time you guys ran the election, we had to build into the budget, I believe it was 20,000 was the line item for election. I don't remember if it was the full 20,000, that was supposed to be our cost for the election.
I'm just going for the fact, we are sitting here tonight really for the very first time, getting all this information. And yes, we've talked about it a little bit as a board, and that's where we've given Brian the direction. But you're going to, one time, have this information here at a meeting, and then put all of this stuff together so that we can get a vote in November. I'm, I'm just not comfortable with that.
Because it would have to be presented.
I just think there's more work involved.
In June, early July, so it's weeks away.
Well, because I lean more towards the whole, no, the whole big picture of $15 million, 36 million, if we're, these are things that need to happen. Because down the road, Brian just said, things are going to break, all of that kind of stuff. So I'm more, let's go for what we absolutely have to have done. That's where I would lean.
But not in November, go in May.
That's just, that's just my opinion, that's just my thought. This is the first time this is being made public, and this is a lot of information for all of us. It's a lot of information for people out in the community to.
It would give them an opportunity to come to and present any questions or concerns that they had as well.
I mean, I agree with you, Margaret, because I was around for the last bond. But what harm would it do to do it in November just to see where we stand with the community?
The only harm that I see is the same old stuff that we get that says, all of a sudden, here's this, the school needs, all of this stuff, we just passed a bond, we just did things a few years ago. That's, that's the only thing. That is, that is real in this community. So. It's also real statewide, nationwide, that education does need improvements overall. And I think that that's really a huge shift that's been changing amongst many people. But this is an education. So there, no, it's. It's the building of the educational building. It's a completely different animal. You're talking about parking lots and all of that stuff that is important in the building, but not everybody looks at it that way. It's not education. There's nothing in here talking about the things that we've done before to educationally better our students. Except for making a better building for the students to learn. Has nothing to do with education when you're talking about the people out there, how they're looking at, how they're voting. It's not. I would definitely be interested in canvassing the community and seeing how they feel. I'm not sure. Well, that wouldn't be our job to do as a board. That's not our job. So we couldn't have a public forum and answer the community about this? You just said you wanted to canvass. That's a completely different thing. We don't canvass.
So Brian, can we, can we set up some forums? Could we contact, you know, people in the city, maybe the city, and see what their thoughts, get their support on this, the community's support?
So I guess the question I'm looking for is there, is there any interest in going for any of this in November, whether an increase or a no increase?
Well, yeah, I guess the conversation is to be, what is the board looking? Is the board looking to do just scenario A? Are they looking to do A and B? And that's where you move then forward on how you want to do it.
In the timeline, I can't, I didn't mean to cut you off. I mean, I understand the no-no and that there's a higher pass rate, but I also see that the infrastructure needs to be fixed, and I feel like we need the time to get that out to the community. So I would look toward, you know, if the majority of the board felt that way, for a B scenario in March, in the March election.
A B scenario, meaning go for the full in March?
March or May.
I think if we're going to go for the increase, we need more time. If we're just going for no-no, then November could possibly work.
Right.
When do you want to come?
Oh, I said from the beginning that we should go for everything.
Okay. I support it.
Brian, I see there's no technology listed. What's the plan, like, for the laptops, even when they will?
The last series bond that we purchased or sold had money in it for laptops, so we're in the process of looking at the laptop replacements for the existing.
Oh, there's still money then?
Correct. With the increase in Wi-Fi, what will be coming for you is some changes to our policies that allows students to bring their own devices rather than being assigned necessarily to students if they don't want a district issue. They can still have the protection, I guess, from the firewall and be able to print, our printers, yes. But there is currently money budgeted to firm replacements. So let me do the, let me finish, let's have Matt talk about timelines and a little bit more. And then on the next one, I'm going to talk a little bit about Stanford's projections to show you. And at that point at the end, if the board could give me some direction at that point.
I have one more question, though. For the millages going during normal elections, or whether it's a, you know, pre-term election, is there a passage rate difference on those because of the amount of voters that get out for those?
You're referring to general elections?
Right.
Or presidential primaries? You can flip back to that one slide. There's a lot of other factors that can be assessed of a bond issue. So voter turnout is one of those factors. And of course, presidential primary, presidential elections have, you know, high voter turnouts. But there are other things that can influence an election. One is, what other things are on the ballot? It could be a municipal issue that could be bringing people to the polls, and your issue could just be, you know, secondary, what they're coming out to the polls for. Also, as far as the district's own needs are, how apparent are the needs and how effective this district has to convey these needs? So all those factors, voter turnout, other things on the proposal, how apparent are the needs, and then how effective was this district that the community, all play a role.
I can say this, what other things are on the ballot? The Utica School Board passed a resolution authorizing or directing, I should say, their superintendent. superintendent requests the MISD to go for enhancement village.
Right.
The MISD has been exploring what that would be for countywide village, and I haven't seen the statistics and the polling, you know, they actually want them to go for a three-mill increase. All the polling says anything over one mill will not pass in McComb County, and it's like significantly decreased rate of. So, if the IST goes for it, they are potentially looking at that March or May deadline. In that process, if their, if their board authorizes to go, then it's going to come to each of the districts in McComb County to basically support putting that on the mill. Now, they could do enhancement, they could do a special ed, which brings special ed dollars, which creates a general ed, they're going to order CT dollars, but they are, they are looking at it. I know local one is requesting a three-mill. All, except all the polling, so if anything over a mill is hands down to be in McComb County.
And do we, I mean, do we know what, if there's any timeline for any type of local villages that they're asking for, you know, their historical village, or is there a, I don't, I don't know the answer to that.
I'm not aware of any of that, but I did not look into that, I could sort of ask-
I would just be curious when you're thinking about those other, you know, dollars and how people determine what is most important.
You know, a March election depends on the type of voter that's going to show up at the absentee, you know, the presidential primary.
How many absentee voters?
We'll have an increase in absentee ballots, if there's a, if there's a competition in terms of who the, whether it's Republican or Democratic, I don't want to use Republican because they hold the office right now, you may draw more people who will support one type of candidate, which may not be for, may not be pro-taxes.
Right.
Or pro-school, so it's a, I would recommend a May rather than a primary, but that's just my, I'm not a statistic, I don't do all that research, I would rely on the company that gives the recommendation, what's the best chance.
Thank you.
Okay, okay, well, thank you, Brian. So, as Brian mentioned, my name is Matt Heiser, I'm a finance and elections attorney with Trune Law Firm, and Brian asked me to come tonight, really, for two reasons. One, to show you just some examples of what the ballot proposals would look like, and to kind of compare the schedule of events, or the election calendar, that would apply to either one of the two scenarios. So, I'm going to try to limit it to that, and then if you have any broader questions afterward, I'm happy to take those. So, before I get started, I just want to make sure that you have the information that I circulated, because I don't have slides, so it's hard copy. So, you should have, so, the information that was attached to Brian's email.
Yeah, there you go, that is your document, you have warmest of bond, a building and sinking fund?
Yeah, so there's two sets of information. So, one, there's one proposal that says building and site sinking fund, and then there's a calendar that relates to that that just has sinking fund at the top of the calendar, so. So, that is the first set, and then the second set has bond proposal option one, second document is bond proposal option two, and then the third document is a much longer calendar, that's the word bond, just below the heading of the calendar. So, I'm going to start with the bonding proposal options, because I, just from what I've heard from the needs assessments tonight, I think that's probably the more likely scenario, depending upon, you know, when you might decide to do that. So, the, I'm going to begin with the bonding proposal option one, and what this relates to, just to kind of put it in context, is this is the A option, that you heard the design and construction folks refer to, and this is also what's provided in the PFM table six A. So, the, so I'll start with, with just the distinction between a bonding proposal and a village proposal, just to make sure that you're all aware. So, with the bonding proposal, what the school district's asking voters to do is to authorize the school district to issue a certain amount of bonds for the purposes that are described in the proposal, and then if the voters approve the proposal, then the school district can levy each year whatever village rate is necessary to generate enough tax revenue to make the principal and interest payments on the bonds the following year. So, it's not a village proposal, it's a bonding proposal. So, you're asking for a certain amount of bonds, can levy whatever village rate is necessary the following year, there's no heavily rollback. Now, PFM's really good at estimating, you know, what that village rate is going to be, but theoretically, whatever it takes to generate enough revenue to pay the principal and interest on the bonds the following year, that's what you're able to levy. A sinking fund proposal, which I'll get to in a second, is just like your non-homestead operating village. So, in that case, you're asking voters to authorize the school district to levy a certain number of mills, and then whatever revenue that generates each year, that's really all you have, okay? And unlike a bond proposal, this village proposal, just like your non-homestead operating village, is subject to heavily rollback. So, whether you go with one mill or two mills or three mills, that mill, those mills can be eroded each year if your taxable value increases essentially faster than the rate of inflation, okay? So, that's the difference between bonding and sinking fund. So, let's start with the bonding proposal option one. So, this would apply, this is a seventeen point four million dollar bond issue, this would be for the A scenario that you heard from, from the design and construction folks, and this relates to the PFM table six A. So, the language that's provided in the second paragraph, and again, Brian wanted you to see what, you know, these proposals look like, just to give you an idea, the language that's provided in the second paragraph, all those numbers that are in there are required to be in there under state law, okay? So, you'll see in both scenarios, option one, option two, the bond proposals, there's information in there that has to be in there, except for the highlighted information. So, on the second line of that second paragraph, you see for zero-mill net increase over the prior year's levy, okay? So, that's, that's that seventeen point four million dollar proposal that RJ described. Now, this language isn't required to be in there, but the school, we've grown comfortable over the years that this kind of excess language, it's okay under state law for that to be in there, and you can elect to include it, and according to RJ's schedule, you know, it's been valuable for some districts, okay? So, and then just looking at the third and fourth paragraph of both proposals, that language is also required to be in there under state law as well. So, then I'll just briefly touch on option two. So, this is the A and B scenario that you heard from the design and construction folks, this is a thirty-five million dollar bond issue, and the increase in the first year is two point four mils, just like RJ showed you in PFM tables seven A. So, the highlighted language there is it's a one point four-mill increase projected. So, you don't have to include this, you can if you want to, I don't know that it's a good idea, but in the first proposal, option one, is something that I would think seriously about, including when you do decide to approach the voters. So, that's the bonding proposal, let's just take a look at the calendar that relates to the bond issue. So, as Brian mentioned, we do have, so the first step in the process, because these bonds would be qualified for the Michigan School Bond qualification and loan program. If the bonds are qualified for the program, that enables the school district to obtain the state's credit rating, which is higher than the school district's, and that's valuable because a higher credit rating translates into lower interest rates, and all the projections that RJ has showed you assume those lower interest rates. So, this would be, this would be a required part of the process for the bond election. So, on June fourteenth, Dale would be primarily responsible for preparing an application for preliminary qualification bonds. We'd give that to Treasury, and as Brian mentioned, we currently have a meeting scheduled with Treasury. We can cancel that, Treasury won't care, they've got too many meetings anyway. So, that is set right now for June twentieth to ten AM, and this whole group will be there, Brian will be there, if a board member wants to come along, Treasury doesn't crown on that, maybe even two, but Treasury really doesn't like to have a lot of board members at the meetings, but one or two would be fine if you want to come, it's kind of, it doesn't happen often, but you're welcome to do so. So, after that meeting, the purpose of that meeting is to finalize the EQ application. There almost always changes unless Dale's responsible for preparing, then there's hardly ever a change. So, you're like, oh, that's right. So, so there are, because there are usually changes, we generally schedule the board meeting a few days after the preliminary qualification meeting. So, that would be your June twenty-four regular meeting. We would bring that application back to you, we would have made the change and a half where Dale screwed up, and it would be in final form, and then we would formally file it with Treasury, okay? Treasury, for whatever reason, they need thirty days approximately to kind of formally review it. Once, I've never really had a change, frankly, after, you know, after it's been formally submitted, but it's part of their process. And then we would endeavor for the board to adopt the resolution calling for the election at its regular meeting on August twelfth, okay? We can't, the board can't take that action until they've gotten the letter from Treasury saying that the bond issue has been qualified for this school loan program, okay? And then importantly, the filing deadline is August thirteenth at four PM, so the resolution that's adopted on the twelfth would need to be filed with your election coordinator, which is the county court, by four o'clock the next day. That's not out of the ordinary, I don't recommend that for kind of May bond issues, because you end up with a February meeting date that can get canceled because of snow or whatever, and it's all for naught, but so long as four up, you're prepared to be here on August twelfth if you decide to move forward with the November election, we should be fine. And then after that, the remaining items on the sheet really relates to kind of conducting the election, which really the school district's not going to be comfortable for anymore.
So, Matt, I didn't interrupt you, so just go back to your point, Margaret, preparing the information on campaign and forum. To me, that twenty-first of September is a drop dead date to get those absentee voters. Those are a cast their ballot proposal. Any type of communication, forums held, would have to be targeted to those particular groups who are probably going to cast their ballot as soon as they get them in the mail. On the twenty-first, twenty-second, they'll make their votes and send them right back, and anything he does already, you know, it's not going to help us, so. You're right, it is a very, for November, it is a very tight timeframe.
Yeah, it is, I will give you that. I will tell you, though, that there are many districts that are kind of on this schedule. I think it relates to, you know, there's politics of every district that is unique, I think that you, I mean, there's important considerations that have been raised tonight, but I just don't want you to think like there aren't other districts that are on this timeline. Okay, so that's the bonding proposal, so that's the, so the second set of materials are just the two documents, you just got the building and site sinking fund, and then the gambling, okay? So, the sinking fund, again, this is a village proposal, so as RJ mentioned in his presentation, you can no longer ask for a village to be effective any more than ten years, so we've just assumed ten years here, you could go less, and then no more than three mils. So, RJ showed you the revenue that would be generated with one mill, two mil, three mils, and there might have been one point four or something in there. So, I've set this up just for one mill to make it easy. RJ's projecting that with your taxable value, we don't have the nineteen numbers, but just estimated, the very last number in this sinking fund proposal is five hundred fifty-one thousand dollars of tax revenue that would be generated in the first year. And I wrote down what was on one of RJ's other slides, so over a ten-year period, that would get you six million dollars, again, very rough estimate. If you were at two mils over a ten-year period, that would get you, I ordered that wrong, whatever it was, and then three mils, eighteen million. So, my takeaway from that was, you know, we're considering a seventeen point four million dollar bond issues, the basic needs, you know, the benefit is you get most of that upfront, I think it makes a lot of sense here to issue bonds in two series, but if you went with a sinking fund proposal, even at three mils, it's going to take you ten years to generate it to the maximum. So, and then with the calendar, it's pretty simple. It's, it's, it's just basically, we prepare the resolution calling for the sinking fund village election, and then it needs to be filed with the county court the next day. And for that, if you decided, you know, in July, we could have you adopt that resolution at any time, so we're not the day before it has to be filed, but that's for this election. So, that's really all I had, is, Brian, do you have any questions, or want me to cover anything else?
Right, and Matt, I might suggest on the sinking fund, that the campaign consultants will tell you, you're going to do the same amount of work to convince the community to pass a sinking fund that you will for the bond proposal, so it's not like there's any less effort in getting that sinking fund approved, so, you know, same strategy, same process.
It might be more work, because we don't have a sinking fund, we haven't had one, and so trying to educate what he thinks is right, might be more education needed, where they passed a bond before, and there's a preliminary.
So, I just wanted to mention that, you know, you go through all the effort regardless.
And I do think those consulting firms can bring value, and obviously, it costs money, I'm not aware of the pricing, Brian, it sounds like you're familiar with, you know, SILE, no one, I mean, I think that is certainly something considered.
Fire and FISC is one that Fitzgerald has used, you know, he's the husband and wife team at Quicks.
Fine.
For New Haven, just wanted to add.
They charge fifteen thousand.
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, I guess let me, if you would allow me to at least look at what the enrollment projections are for the company, and then kind of talk big picture, because you, regardless of, I'm going to Treasury, they're going to need these numbers anyway, they're going to ask for them. So, what I put in your packet, you'll see a chart that has a lot of, a lot of numbers on it, and when you're looking, I would just ask you to look at the very first page of that chart, and it says on it that if you're going to use this for facilities planning, which is what we're using these numbers for, they ask, they recommend us using the one point five projection, using the most likely to the high projection. So, basically what they've done, and I'm going to give you the Cliff Notes version of this, is they have taken, looked at birth rates, death rates, they've looked at our past enrollment, and they've looked at what they project future enrollment to be, and so what you see here on the screen is I've taken the chart that Stanford has put together. You'll see, and I did bands, so you see in the green area are typically middle, or the elementary, yellow representing middle school, and blue representing high school. And they take these numbers off of the, you know, our FTE counts reported to the state every year, so you can see for the last half year, we've had a declining, a declining enrollment. When you're starting to look at facility planning, you need to look at potentially what's there, and their recommendation is look at the most likely to a high projection, add the two together, divide by two, and then use that number as your number. So, that's what I did here, is I took for the kindergarten through twelfth grade for the nineteen-twenty school year, and this first line represents the most likely, the second line represents the highly, high projection, and then the third line represents the average of the two divided by, or the average of the two. So, when I look at the elementary, you'll see nineteen, four nineteen, five thirty-three, but keep in mind, we've added fourth grade now to the elementary, or the middle school, and you have four fifty. As you keep going up, you'll see some enrollment trends, and on the, on the far right, you'll see numbers over the previous year, so when you look at the next five years, they're estimating about a hundred more kids- So when you look at the next five years, they're estimating about 100 more kids in our district. 200 kids in a classroom, that's five classrooms when you look at it. So all of the additions, renovations, and so forth, really were within the scope of this projection. Now, does that mean we're going, we should be budgeting for it? No, this is what their recommendation for facility plan. You know, the way these classrooms were designed when they were built in the original is not the way we're using them now. If you have more preschool programs, you're putting less kids in those classrooms than you are, you know, a kindergarten classroom and so forth. So the five-year trend shows overall as a district, we should be up about 100, about 100 kids. For us, that's a lot, that's a lot of kids. And like I said, when you look at these reports, they look at birth rates, since, you know, as a state, you know, they don't expect as a state for us to grow much overall, so about 24, 23, 24. In Macomb County, the northern districts are the one they're projecting still to see any type of growth, where the southern districts are still on a declining. So looking at this, looking for enrollment projection for facility use, looking at what you heard, I guess I would be looking for some direction from the Board, whether you want to, if you want further study, time to think about, and have more conversation. You know, I would recommend if we're gonna, if we're going to do anything in November, that if we schedule a special meeting to have further conversation, and maybe promote it to the community that this is what we're looking at within the next couple of weeks. Because if we are going for November, we've got to get some things that are, are ducks in a row, as well as if the Board's going to hire some type of consulting firm to help us with the marketing and the message. If you're not looking at November, and you want to go into May, we obviously have more time to begin planning.
Let's get a general consensus on A or B. It sounds like everyone's kind of going for the A and B together, right? I just want to go for all of it, right?
That's what I think we should do, yes.
Do you guys want to?
I think we need it, like, I think, I'm worried about it not passing. I'd rather get something than nothing. Maybe if we went for A, that's my idea.
Okay. Can you go?
I think our infrastructure needs to be updated, and that's the way that we're going to be able to do it.
Okay. Okay. I'd like to go for A if you don't want to talk. So Margaret wants to wait till May, right? Do you want to do May?
Yeah.
Angela, what are your thoughts?
I'd be, of course, willing to do May. I also think that in November timeline, I don't think we should be too afraid of it, but either way, I do believe that we should go for the full, we have both A and B.
You guys want to wait till May or try November? May? May?
Yeah, I think the community needs a little more time to wrap their head around it. And we'll need a little more time to get a good message out there and make them understand that it's a need.
Agreed.
I just want to give my two cents here. If you wait till May, and you're on for the 1.4, and it doesn't pass, your millage drops off, or hard millage drops off a hole. And would I be safe to assume we're going for a 2.4 if we go back?
No, we could assume.
Oh, I don't think we could go for 2.4, though.
But if you're looking to get the whole thing, 34 million, you're, you're, and again, I don't, there's uneasiness with me in this whole thing, too. Just from the perspective of, I wasn't here when the last election, I only know what has happened in the past, and it hasn't been easy. But strategy-wise, if you're going to go in May, and the ISD goes in May, which they are talking about it, now you've got two ballots on it. If you go in November, it goes down. You go back in May, say, okay, let's go for the critical lead and at least get four female, no increase. Just up. And again, if there, if you need, as a Board, if you're set with May, I'll, I respect that decision. If you want to think about it.
Well, it doesn't mean we can't do March.
I know. Why are we hesitating away from March?
Right. I mean, if you want.
If you do March, I don't think you have the turnaround to do May. We only have two windows. When you look at the timeline to submit, I believe you have to submit the stuff for the May during the March election. So we'd have to submit it before.
That's correct.
You have to submit it before the election happens. So we have either November or March, or November or May, if you want two chances. But you don't have a March/May time.
I feel like if we wait and don't do November, I wouldn't go for 2.4 and then the next election. To me, this waiting is, I want the community to get the information, but it's, I would say, somewhat of a gamble. And then if we, if we don't get it, I'm not going for, I wouldn't probably go for a 2.4.
But either way, you're going to go for an increase after July 1 of '20, even if you only did the one.
Yeah, I'd be going for the one.
Which we're down to the 15 million. So I'm not a gambler. But if you're only going to eventually get 15, why not go in November for 15 and say no increase? And let's start with the 15.
And you don't, you don't know what the temperament of the voter's going to be at that time. You can't really plan on whether you would go for one or two in May if it didn't, you know, or for, if it didn't pass in May, what you would elect to do, because you have no idea what the temperament of the voter would be.
I'm just thinking, myself.
Right.
Putting 2.4 in there just seems excessive, and I don't know if I would personally do that, if I would personally just vote for that. But that's, in my mind, that's the gamble of just waiting until.
But it's still the same difference then, what you're saying, Sarah.
No, I understand that. But if it, I understand that. I just.
2.4 is a lot as well.
It's a lot. It looks bigger, I guess. I just don't think it would pass, you know, 2.4 seems a lot.
Would the Board entertain doing some, a special board meeting the next week or two to think about that and come back and have a discussion to see strategy-wise, whether it would be beneficial to go even partially in November?
I would be willing to do that. I would have no interest, because I've, I've already made my statement of where I want to go. But if that's what the Board wants to do, and I think, I think you've still got to look at the fact, you have to sell whatever it is you're doing. There's not a lot of time between now and November to sell. And if we need the 36 million, we need the 36 million. You sell it to the point that this is what we need to do. If we come and we ask for 15 million now, and then what? However, along the road, okay, now we need this, then you're looked upon as, well, why the heck didn't you do a complete?
Plan.
Plan. Yeah. You know, it, you get accused of being short-sighted.
I feel like you have more information that you want to gather for us, and that's why I would be willing to meet on the, you know, between now and next week, or whatever you said for a special meeting, because I don't feel like, I feel like there's something that, more that you feel like you need to gather for us, and I don't know what it is.
I don't necessarily know if there's more that I need to gather, other than if you're going to look at a consulting to, what would those costs be to consider? What I always think, you know, is if this is something the voters, you're going to consider going to the voters for, I would then have our next special meeting, make sure we get it out there for parents. Those fourth grade parents that talked about, what about adding on to a building? This is what you, we've done, and we've essentially have said, we've looked at enrollment trends, we've looked at cost. This is what it would cost. If you did all those additions, there is a possibility you could move fourth grade back. Would the Board want to do that? That would be the next question.
But when would we be, in this timeline, we didn't, we wouldn't be building those classrooms until when? When would that construction happen, based on when we would get?
As soon as it, as soon as it's passed, you start, you start the process.
We start next summer, so you're probably talking, what's next year, 2021, the 21, 22 school year, potentially?
We could move the back years then.
That those classrooms, that next school year, wait, next year's 19, 20, 20, 20, probably the 21, 22 school year, we would move in, if you wanted to move those fourth grade back to the elementary. You know, in some of this, I'm going to be honest with you, it was strategic. The parking lot at the elementary school, not only can the school benefit, but there are members in this community that are, that are not voters, that utilize that area, that would benefit. The parking lot from the middle school, you know, just the tap one, and the RGFA, that they have all their tournaments, it creates more parking. To me, those are groups that, that I see that I have to have the campaign and talk with, to say, here's how.
But you just said they're not voters. That's not what you meant, though.
No, I meant that, I'm trying, they may, they're voters in the community, but may not be students that go to.
Right. Okay.
You've got your absentee ballot and hosting, you know, which gives us time at the beginning of the year. We did it in the previous district, we did a senior showcase, and we brought in every senior in the previous district, not every senior, but a good chunk of them, to show them what's in our schools, so they could see, because a lot of them have not been in our, in the schools since their kids were in the schools. I just don't want to limit our windows of opportunity in terms of, if your ultimate goal is you want to get the 1.4, I agree, put a wholehearted effort to pass it in May. But if it doesn't pass in May, to get that same amount is too push forward. I don't know if that would pass. Or if you put it on November, and you saw it, you had to go back, if it was an overall defeat, do you go back and retool it, or do you go back and do the no increase and get the portion of it? And that's why I just threw it out there, if you want to think about it, and, you know, if there's a possibility for November, I encourage you to have a, a special meeting and promote this with the community, to come to that meeting, listen to what we're talking about here, listen to what the items are that are on the needs list.
But again, if you're talking about having a special meeting and promoting it, and have the public, and you're talking about doing it in the next week or so, again, is that whole, you're, you're ramming something, you're, all of a sudden hears this plan that people haven't heard about, and you want to have this special meeting? That's all I'm cautioning you, is that it's that whole rollout thing that has to be done properly.
We've heard that before. We've heard that a lot.
But we have, we have been talking about this. This was brought up in the last month, like, a couple meetings ago.
This is the first, this, this is it. This is all the information. It's the first time it's ever come out.
The complete needs, yes.
Absolutely.
The conversation with the sinking fund, we knew that was not going to get us near what we needed.
I would love to do the November election, but I agree with Margaret. I think we need the community to be on board, and I think we need more time to do that.
I think we put everything into May.
May. Okay. That's it, that one?
That's it.
Okay. So moving on to the 25th presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Have a good night.
Okay. On the fiscal year presentation, there's a couple documents that I, that I put in your packet. One is the assumption that we made at the very part of the budget process, which assumes no increase, projected moving students up a grade level, assuming about 100 kids for kindergarten, and then results in a blended count of being down 30 and so forth. And we, we talked about what that would look like from the perspective of how we would get there. And we're still on track to do that. So the first question I'm going to ask is, is there any, any Board members not comfortable with these assumptions? The last couple minutes have raised them pretty, pretty solid with these assumptions right now. For the voluntary severance, we had four applications that came in. We have five teachers that will retire or resign by June 30th, so we in essence got the five number, but the payout will be less, because we only have four, assuming the Board approves it, and that will come to you in June, because it's under the minimum number of five, from that angle. In your packet, you also have, what's the FY '19 budget amendment? Board members, you'll be asked that last time, so you'll see the account numbers listed on the left side. And this was run right after the last board meeting, so you'll see all the account numbers and the description. You'll see what the amendment was, what the amended budget that totals. And so there's about 100 pages there, and it goes to each of the function codes, from the revenue at the beginning, which is always shown in the negative, and the expenses, when you get into the function code 111 and so forth, salaries and so forth, that you'll see there at the, in the positive number. You also see in the packet, you, what I put together was what we know, all three budgets have been released. The governor's budget, when you go to the executive budgets website, for Richmond, when you look at total revenue changes, which includes 31A, CTE, high schools, all the revenue, which is more on the formula, it's a $322 per pupil increase. Her budget is relying on the gas tax, a revenue, which in essence, all gas goes into roads. We're a part of gas right now, pays for schools. She takes out the higher end out of the school aid fund, which then captures that revenue back to the Elaborator. So it's trying, on her budget, trying to put the right revenue where it is. It also changes the way road funding is done, but it does rely currently on the gas tax or some type of rep, hers is gas tax. So you see the impact on the governor's budget for us. When you look at the next slide, which is the House budget, and I gave you the document, if you want to look at what every district gets, you can just, there, it's searched there, you can find it by district. It gives you all the per pupil. But for Richmond, I'll do that scenario, the impact for Richmond on the House budget is $180 per pupil increase. It does not do anything with the funding, aligning school funding to what the research collaborative does, typically what we've typically done, the 2X formula, which means lower foundations give basically twice as much as, as higher foundations will deserve. You'll see the net impact for us on the House budget is a $40,000 more revenue than expenses, assuming all programs stay the same, and assuming our expenses stay the same. And then finally, you'll see the Senate budget, which again, you can't say, you're more than 100% of this, it's very, but it gives you, every district in the, in the state of Michigan, but the impact on the Senate budget for Richmond is $270 per increase. So when you look at the net, you'll see right now, expenses, we wouldn't really have to do any reductions, and the expenses are, revenue exceeds expenses by 165,000. Every organization that I belong to, superintendent's association, even the sheriffs, says over and over, nobody's expecting a budget till September, August, September. Every organization is encouraging you to budget very conservatively, and that's why I think the zero increase with what we've done, I think is, it's manageable to, for us to create a budget, a balanced budget for next school year. Any additional revenue, any fewer kids lost will then come out as we implement that budget. Amy, do you have anything from your organizations that you belong to, the business associations?
Oh, definitely. They are optimistic that we might get something. However, they're recommending that because budgets that have been put forth, not all of the funding is in place, they still say budget, zero increase until we actually see some movement. There's a lot of compromising that goes on, and they don't know where it's going to shake out for school districts.
This, this is probably the most political budget process I've seen in a long time, because there's, it's very, it would not surprise me if come October 1st, we have a state shutdown to force one side to move, much like we did with the federal government. But optimistically, I think what your assumptions you've, we've been talking about are fair. I think it balances the budget, doesn't reduce any programs. Assuming you guys support the less than four VSPs, it nets us the savings that we need for balancing this budget. That would be my recommendation. Any questions on the budget, or any comments, or anything?
Do you have any updates on preschool, kindergarten?
Do you have any updates on preschool, kindergarten, anything, numbers changed that you can show that different from the last time you showed them?
We are closer, we have more students in kindergarten. I think we have 82 that have packets in, in some fashion. They're not made all of them be complete. That's higher now than it was at this time. Preschool, she just sent me the email, I would say today, but I didn't get a chance to look at. But I can hit you those numbers where we are in the preschool line. Preschool's pretty much still a self-sufficient program. They actually, between preschool and childcare, we counted some of that revenue here to help with the general fund. So, if anything, it may put in this in us less of that revenue. But I can, I can get you the kindergarten numbers. They're solid. I mean, they're, they're strong from, compared to years past.
The seven-hour day, the middle school?
That was voted unanimously by the 100%, I keep, correct me if I'm wrong, was that the first time in a couple of years it's been a 100%? Usually, there's been one or two that, but this was 100%. They voted and supported the seven-tier day. So, the budget and what we're planning on, we're scheduling as, is, we've been doing what students' interests are, and it's caused some sections to increase and some sections to decrease. Just for instance, we currently have run six sections of, we're down to, or we only have five sections at the middle school, but we have more technology. There's more of a technology need, I think. What was the other one? Spanish, we have, we have technology. And we semesterized some of the courses in the course catalog, rather than ordering them. So, we're getting pretty close to finalizing the schedule at the middle school, high school, and I believe we're pretty much final in terms of what we're offering. They're now just running the scenarios to make sure we don't have any kids that have a unique request that they, we can't get them in their schedule. And elementary's pretty, pretty easy to do just by numbers and grade levels.
Okay.
Any other questions on the budget, or? So, Tammy, I will begin finalizing the budget for the June meeting. We do not have another meeting in May with the assumptions that we have here.
Next up, we have public comment. So, unfortunately, we, where anyone in the audience comes to address the board, you have three minutes of detail. It's not a question and answer period. Can we give a name or number if you'd like a call back? Is there anyone who would like to address the board? We've got the student.
Well, I do have quite a bit to announce, since the school year is somewhat coming to an end. Starting off with the Lee School, both the students and staff were very excited to see the seniors walk through Lee last Friday. I'm sure this was also a great experience for the seniors, just to walk through and have that nostalgic feeling before they go on to do great things. The PTO change wars is May 13th through the 24th. The last Green Club meeting for the year is Wednesday, May 15th. Preschool students are having popsicles with parents on Thursday, the 16th. And the, the preschool students will also be having celebrations with fun activities on Monday, May 20th. The 23rd is the three-year-old preschool graduation, and this is at 9:00 AM, and the four-year-old preschool graduation is at 12:00 PM. Likes for Books Assembly for third-grade students is this Thursday, May 23rd, and Memorial Day celebrations are being held the 24th. The elementary school is also having a school-wide pledge and PBIS raffle assembly. And to conclude the elementary school, the PTO-sponsored Field Day is this May 29th. Moving to the middle school, Friday, April 26th, students attended the K-12 musical, High School Musical Junior, and all the students said that they had a great time, that it was very good. Wednesday, May 8th, was the Special Olympics, and all the students who participated had also had a great time at that event. The NJHS induction ceremony of the 2019 class was also a success. Thursday, May 9th, was the middle school and high school band concert, and everybody was very impressed with their performance. Friday, May 10th, was Mourning with Moms, and something really amazing about this was that it had the highest turnout that we've ever had. So, that was really awesome. And this week, fifth graders will have their one-room schoolhouse field trip. I remember going on this field trip. It was really, really fun. You could dress, and you have to bring a school, as if you were in the past, and it's just a really cool experience for them. The eighth grade students will also go on their water, their water treatment plant field trip this week. Friday, May 24th, is the 5K Freedom Run, and this is from 8:30 to 10:00 AM. Wednesday, the 29th, is the seventh grade field trip to the African-American History Museum. The sixth through eighth grade spring choir concert is at 7:00 PM in the high school auditorium for anybody who wants to attend. The 30th Mrs. Jarrett Social Studies classes will be touring the high school during first, second, fourth, and fifth hours. And it was also a good experience for the high school students, because they're, they'll be helping the classes tour the high school. Underclass Awards will be on Friday, the 31st, from 8:00 to 11:00 AM. The eighth grade student leader field trip to Zenders is from 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM, and I'm not quite sure on the date for this. Monday, June 3rd, the fifth grade picnic will be at BB Street Park from 8:30 to 2:00. The sixth grade field trip to CJ Baramore's is, I believe, also Monday, June 3rd, from 8:45 to 2:15. And June 6th, the eighth grade picnic is from 11:15 to 2:00. And to conclude the middle school, Friday, the 7th of June, eighth grade, is the eighth grade promotion ceremony. Moving on to the high school, prom was held at, on May 3rd, at Alexander's Banquet Hall in Marysville, and all the students had a blast. It was a lot of fun.
Including you.
I did have, yeah, it was very fun for me, too. I went with all my friends. We had a good time. Spring, the spring choir concert was May 7th, and the band concert was May 9th, and both groups had outstanding performances. And the high school is looking forward to the senior awards this Thursday at 7:00 PM in the auditorium.
Lexi?
You're welcome.
All right, moving on, this is our agenda. Let me give a quick update, Brian.
From a legislative perspective, last Friday, the governor signed into law the bill for giving additional snow days. So, parents out there, we do not have to add a day of school. So, the revised, I should say revised, you know, I will put the calendar out there, shows all those end-of-the-year dates do not have to get moved and shifted, especially parents that took off days to attend certain awards or ways. This is a busy stuff time. I just encourage all of our seniors, you know, congratulations to your accomplishments. Please make smarter choices. I mean, you have many, many good things ahead of you and are going to do great things, and I want to make sure we get to see that. So, have fun, but don't have too much fun. And that's all.
Next up, items of interest from the board. Is there anyone who would like to say anything tonight?
I think in regard to Teacher Appreciation Week, just thanking our teachers for everything that they do, and all the hard work that they put in every single day, and the care that they give our kids.
I attended the Macomb County All Academic Banquet. Izzy Ferrante and Emily Boer, where the students that were represented from Richmond, was a great banquet. It really is one of the best things to attend, because you get to see and hear some really outstanding kids in Macomb County, including our own, on what they're going to do after high school. So, it's, it's a really cool banquet, and appreciate Mr. Castle, the work that he did to make everything go smoothly for our Richmond people. So, it was a really good event.
I was able to attend the National Junior Honor Society induction, and Mr. Martell's, you guys did a great job putting that ceremony out. Everyone seemed to have a really good time. It was fun to see all the inductees, and the ceremony was just great. So, that was a very good, a good thing to do. I thought there was nothing I wanted to say, but, oh, there is one more thing. So, the Richmond Education Foundation, it's in the bylaws, Margaret, correct me if I'm wrong, that somebody from the board is to sit on that one, attend their meetings, and be a voting member. And the way the bylaws are written is that it's the board president or designee. And I am not able to attend those meetings and give the time that I know that position really deserves. It's a great foundation. It's a great thing to be a part of. They do really great things for our district and for our teachers. So, I don't know if there's any volunteers who might want to sit on that as the designee of the board. So, I'm looking to kind of throw that out there. You guys can think about it, ask questions.
Who else sits on that board? How many members are on that board? Who do they represent?
There are Rich Michaels, Julie Kolosinski, Julie Jacota, Sue Boyd, myself, and Brian. Six.
When do you guys meet? How often?
You are a non-voting member.
I'm a non-voting member.
Correct.
Okay. And how, what, how many event, what's the commitment level?
Um, the commitment is, the meetings are? Every other month. We do, we started doing fundraising where we work the poker nights, the kind of thing. We do the enrichment, the scholarships for graduating seniors. We put together, when we do the teacher grants, we've started scholarships for students to go to summer camps, looking to just try to expand and, and do more things for the district students and staff.
I would be willing to participate if somebody else isn't, you know, able to. That would be fine. I think it's a great cause. I mean, I've been to enrichment. I missed it this year. I was out of town. But I think that, I've talked to some of the recipients of the scholarships last year, some of the students, and the pluses of them going to the different camps, and I think a couple of them went to an art camp.
Mm-hmm.
And the grants that have been given out have been fantastic, enrichment to our classrooms. So, I, if, if it's every other month, I think that I could definitely do that if somebody else wasn't interested.
Okay. Thank you, Chris. I do appreciate that. I want to give it the time that it serves, and I just know that I can't put that in. So, I do appreciate that.
Absolutely.
Is that all for items of interest of the board? Okay, moving on, we have an action item, approval for the designee for the Asbestos Hazard Emergency Response Act.
Okay, through the audit of the facilities, I learned that as a district, we have to have a designated person taking action by the board, who would be the Asbestos Hazard Emergency Response Act designee of 1986. The district completed a asbestos management plan, and we do have all those copies. It needs to be updated. With the additions that have happened, we need to update the plan. And so, before you as a motion to officially designate me as the representative or the designee as required by law, you'll see in the backup documentation, there's a judicial resolution. There's a form that has to be signed on file that says that I know I'm the designee. And then there's the form signs just the last day I worked in the district, so that you turn it over to the next designee. It just holds harmless myself, and if there's anything that's supposed to be done that I didn't know about, but going forward, I would be that designee. So, that's what the recommendation is.
Looking for a motion?
A motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and designate Brian J. Walmsley for the term of his employment with Richmond Community Schools as the Asbestos Designee as required by the Asbestos Hazard Emergency Response Act, AHARA of 1986, consistent with the attached resolution.
Support.
Has it been supported? Any discussion? All of those okay?
Aye.
Pursuant to section 8C of the Michigan Open Meetings Act, I move the Board of Education going to closed session for the purposes of negotiations.
Support. And support any discussion?
Aye.
Aye.
Hi.
Angela. We're going to go into closed session, and we will not be voting really well.